Well, welcome to the Public Safety Veterans Subcommittee Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a special request from Councilmember Williams.
Mr. Chair, I would like to have a moment of silence. Dwayne Pell, who was a former firefighter, retired from the fire department. He was the first councilperson elected in the district system to represent my district, and he went on to be the fire marshal, and he passed away last Sunday. So could we have a moment of silence, please?
Thank you so much. We want to make sure that their families' thoughts and prayers are with us, too. With that, the approval of the minutes of January 14th.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those oppose? Already, we have no cards for a call to the public. So we're going to go into a special city council meeting of the Subcommittee. We'd like to have, at this time, a motion to go into a special meeting.
Second.
All righty, we have a motion and a second to go into a special meeting on item number three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The motion passes, and I invite our Vice Mayor up to be a part of this conversation with us. All right, we have the -- sorry about that. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilwoman Gates. Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela.
Here.
Mayor Stanton. Already with that, I'd like to call up our special ad hoc committee on water safety that the mayor put together.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nowakowski and members of the council. We're pleased to be here today to discuss the work of the Water Safety Ad Hoc Committee and propose recommendations for your consideration. I have at the table with me today Shelley Jameson with our Phoenix Fire Department, Becky Hewitt with the Parks and Recreation Aquatic Division, as well as Sonia Smith, our great community partner with Banner University Medical Center, as well as Tiffany Isaacson, also from Phoenix Children's Hospital. In addition to that, the individuals at the table presenting today, directly behind me is also representatives from the Phoenix Fire Department, who also put a lot of time and energy into the presentation that we're going to present to you today, and also Juana Hernandez, who, if she could please stand really quickly, is a great partner with St. Salt River Project as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Shelley.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Nowakowski and members of the council. We appreciate your time this morning. We wanted to give you an update on our ad hoc committee findings. So this ad hoc committee was initially put together in August of last year after it was determined over the past five years, we've had an average of 72 drowning incidents per year. Last year, we had 39 involving people, children, under the age of 18. Five of those were fatalities. So for the city of Phoenix, we consider this an epidemic and something we wanted to address. Over the past several years, we've had many campaigns, much of them rely upon the media, messaging, and many of them are reactive. So you hear about them after the drowning has occurred. What we want to do is something proactive, and that's what we're going to introduce today. So I thank you for your attention and our opportunity to report on the findings of the ad hoc committee. This was formed in August at the behest of Mayor Stanton, who appointed Vice Mayor Valenzuela and Councilman Nowakowski to be co-chairs. We got together with a number of partners from the community and the city as well. All of these collaborators make us stronger, bring more information to the table, and cause us to be more able to share this message and our findings, and put together something quite new. So with this multidisciplinary group of stakeholders, and this is a look at them, you see it ranges from the private sector, Phoenix Children's Hospital, Banner University Medical Center, both of whom, which are at the table this morning, integral players, but many others as well, Salt River Project, Neighborhood Services with the city, Phoenix Parks. Becky Hewlett is the aquatics representative because they give swim lessons. So there are a number of factors that go into water safety, water safety education, and we needed as much strength and muscle as possible to get that information and messaging across. The first thing we did as an ad hoc committee is we came up with a mission statement, and our mission statement is quite simple but direct, and that is to reduce water incidents and drowning in Phoenix by building water safety messages, education, and awareness for all. We're very good at doing this already, and we use our partners now to do so. What we wanted to do was something different, and so that's what you're going to see today. Based on the information that we utilized, and much of that, the statistics, demographics, et cetera, came from Tiffany Isaacson of Phoenix Children's Hospital. She compiles that for them, indicated that the highest drowning rates occur in Maricopa and Pima counties. We are unfortunately among the highest ranked states for child drowning, among the others that you see, Florida, Texas, Nevada, and California, a statistic that, of course, we're not proud of. In Arizona, teens drowned as well. We often focused on the youngest victims because they garner the most attention. However, teenagers are also victims to water accidents. So part of this committee's charge was not just to focus on childhood drownings, little ones, but teenagers as well, and also adults. We lose many adults every year to drowning. So these are some of the statistics that we based our curriculum upon and what we wanted to do. So how serious is drowning in the city of Phoenix? We had 350 water-related incidents in the past four years, between 2010, 2014. 95 of those were fatal. Now, although, again, most of them involved adults, 31% involved children and teenagers. Again, those are the ones that get the most attention. About 25 of those incidents resulted in lifelong disability. So the victims that we often don't hear about, the term that you will hear on the news is near drowning. Near drowning indicates that it was a save, and although the victim may have survived, what you don't see are the lifelong disabilities that they suffer. There is a particular place in Phoenix called Casa de Los Angeles, if you're not familiar with it. Many of those near drowning survivors reside there. They have to be fed by tubes, they breathe by ventilators. It is not a quality of life that would indicate that it was a success, having it be a near drowning. 76 of those incidents that we're talking about involve children and teens, so most of those, and about a quarter of them involved adults.
Well, thank you for, on behalf of Banner Health, Councilman Nowakowski and Vice Mayor Valenzuela and the whole Subcommittee, thank you for having us here. The mayor tasked us with the Water Safety Ad Hoc Committee focus group areas. The marketing area was our outreach and awareness. Our education curriculum was for the training and for the community and the vendors and the trainers, and the community partnerships was to strengthen the message as a whole for all of us working together.
So what you see here is the program that our group, the ad hoc committee, came up with. After much statistical review and hours, hundreds of hours spent on a potential curriculum, this is what they came up with, and we're calling it Save Our Summer, the Save Our Summer Initiative. And I would like to emphasize again here, this does not replace the programs that we already have in place. This is, it's going to enhance it in a very new way. So as you know, you're bombarded with hundreds of messages every day, whether it's street signs, traffic signals, Facebook, Twitter, the news, stuff that's on the radio, and we're very good at processing that. But in that great amount, we sometimes lose the import of them, and I think that's what's occurred with much of our anti-drowning, excuse me, water safety messaging. So what you're going to see with our Save Our Summer initiative is something new in the sense that we're going to ask the community to train each other. We're going to ask person-to-person communication, touch training to make a difference, instead of just relying on messaging. So in this case, you'll see the basic messages. They never change. Our water safety messaging is always the same. It's very simple. It's adult supervision. It's barriers, and it's knowing CPR and how to swim. Many people don't know how to swim, surprisingly. So again, our partner with aquatics is where that comes in. The city offers swim lessons. So these are some of the basics. Nothing new there. What is new about our Save Our Summer initiative is the way that we intend to deliver it, utilizing our community partners, as you see, private and public agencies. We're going to band together and train the community to train others. So again, person-to-person.
Okay, again, I'm Sonia Smith from Banner Health, and what we did was we vetted it through our peers. So after we completed the curriculum, the education piece, we went through our peers that were on the ad hoc committee, and we vetted it through them. At that point, we changed a few things, and then we vetted it through our community. We formed a focus group, and in that focus group, we had ASU, faith-based communities, refugee, and Chicanos Por La Casa. They all were in the focus group, and they gave us more information, and that's the information you are seeing today.
So, good morning, and thank you for having us here, Chair Nowakowski, Vice Mayor Valenzuela, and members of the Subcommittee. I'm going to go ahead and talk about, a little bit about, the curriculum that we did put together. Based on all the feedback from the focus groups, from our peers in the ad hoc committee, we were able to come up with a curriculum where we can touch on all the information that will give us a little bit longer than the couple minutes in the news, a couple seconds here, to get that messaging out, but really educate people on what's happening in our community, how does drowning happen, what does it look like, who doesn't know how to swim, how do we teach people how to swim, what are the resources? So we're really going to educate these trainers to be able to get out to the community and train individuals. We're going to talk about the children drowning, the fact that our one- to four-year-olds are at the most risk as far as, that's what we see in the news. However, our adult population, our teen population, is also very at risk as well. They doubled the number of incidents with the adults, but we don't see that in the media. A lot of times, those are fatalities, and so we need to really talk about adults learning how to swim. Many times when adults don't know how to swim, they don't teach their children how to swim. And so it becomes this vicious cycle of people not learning how to swim. So we're going to try to reduce that. Again, we need to talk to people about the young teens and adults and the choices they're making, and the peer pressure, and the drugs and alcohols and medications that contribute to some of those drowning scenarios. So that's really what the curriculum is going to talk about, what we're going to teach. We will clearly touch on all, as those five messages, the barriers, the classes, the learned CPR, wearing life jackets, the different things that we really need our public to utilize as layers of protection. That's all incorporated into this training. In order to roll this out to the community, we are going to have a work group, and that work group is going to, it's really members of this ad hoc committee, the experts in the field, that will work with two people, two coordinators for this year for the pilot program. Those two coordinators are going to be utilized, resources from current resources in Parks and Fire. Those two will be in, their job is going to be to train 16 trainers. Those 16 trainers will then go out and educate the community. So at this point, we're looking at utilizing current resources for our pilot program for the first year. We'll have 16 trainers, and those 16 trainers will then go out to the community and educate.
Of course, we can't do this without help. I've emphasized our collaboration with other agencies, and two very important ones would be Local 493. They're, they have stepped forward and agreed to donate funding to help us buy binders, flash drives, and the materials we need to give to the trainers to train the community. In addition, Salt River Project has agreed to provide funding to give us resource guides. So in addition to the training, we will be passing on resource guides for the individuals who we train. Very important information, critical and easy to access, everything from what the guidelines are for fencing, barriers, where to get CPR classes, anything they might need related to water safety and educating their family. This morning, our recommendation for the, from the Water Safety Ad Hoc Committee are these. We would like to ask that the Save Our Summer initiative be implemented. Again, we've been very careful in how we do this so that it will be successful. Our plan at this point, as Becky stated, is to utilize 16 Phoenix community centers. So we already have bricks and mortar in place that have trainers in them, and they're located in all city council districts. All of those community centers are staffed, so within those, that's where we'll draw from to get the trainers. We've already identified eight people who have agreed to be trainers, so we're halfway there. Our timeline right now stands as this. We're going to continue to identify the rest of the trainers in May, that's our goal. We will train them in June, and then we're going to put out the schedule and the registration opportunity in July on the city of Phoenix. The way we will track the individuals who register for this program is through the city of Phoenix registration system. It's already in Parks and Recreation. We can track them, capture these individuals, and then do follow-up, because it's very important for us to follow-up with the individuals who've had the training to find out whether it made a difference, if they were able to reach others, and if it was successful. We will actually start the program in August. Our intention is to have an August-to-August pilot program, and at the end of that, measure the results. And so that is our recommendation this morning. Again, a citywide effort in every city council district and throughout the city with pilot, private, and public agencies.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank the committee and for all your hard work, and really want to thank all those partners that you mentioned earlier, Children's Hospital, Banner University Medical Center, Salt River Project, and Save Kids of Maricopa County, and all the city departments that were involved with this. I mean, what a great program to put together where we're actually training individuals. We're training the trainer, we're not out there doing all the classes ourselves, but we're going to train people to go out and save lives. So thank you so much. So is there any comments from my colleagues?
No comments.
No cards.
I have comments. And it's the teacher coming out at me. When I heard the registration, the tracking, who are you tracking? That's what I didn't get, I wasn't clear on that.
Our plan is to track the individuals who register to take the classes. So once we have the trainers in place, they'll be teaching the public, and that's the public that we're referring to.
Okay, because in my mind, I was thinking, what am I doing? Is it my phone? Oh, okay. It's Councilwoman Nowakowski's phone. Just got to make that clear. I was thinking, because we have, if it's 16 designated areas, and I'm assuming they're community centers, that we also have city staff within there. Are we training city staff to, okay, so will they be part of the trainers, or are they going to be the ones training the trainer?
Okay, let me go ahead and address that, Councilwoman. We would go ahead and train current city staff to be trainers, and those trainers would then train the community.
Okay.
So the experts, the people that put this curriculum together, would sit with those 16 individuals. They could be current staff, and we're also looking for leaders within the community that attend those community centers as well. They don't necessarily have to be city staff, but we're looking to work with the community centers to identify the best person in that community to reach out to train the community.
Okay.
If I may, Councilwoman, one of the things that we also identified through our research prior to putting together this curriculum and identifying what was needed, was that there are specialty groups in the community. It isn't just a general statement. When we talk about the community, we're talking about refugee groups, bilingual training, bilingual materials, and identifying members of the population and areas that are particularly vulnerable.
And so I'm, it's just because Southwest Behavioral Health does a whole program within the refugee population at the, at a very young age of begin to read, read to your child. And so I was thinking, okay, that would be a great partner, maybe to look within there. And so I'm just thinking out loud now, so I'll stop. And thank you for, is this material bilingual? Is, it is? Okay, so you thought of all my questions, answers to my questions. So thank you, I really appreciate your hard work, and I'm assuming the ad hoc committee would come back with all evaluations of how, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. I was just kind of thinking along the same lines as the Councilwoman. The Boys and Girls Club, so YM and the YMCA have pools, they have a built-in audience. Are you going to make them trainers?
The idea is we will, for this pilot year, we're going to start with the 16. We want to evaluate the program, and of course, we will then reach out to other partners within the city, you know, and YMCA's are definitely somewhere we can reach and touch, and we will be looking for those types of entities that have that leadership in place and that structure in place as well, that can utilize this program and train people that attend those facilities as well.
Because it just seems, if you're just using staff at our community centers, that's pretty limited. You're just reaching a small group where this would spread it throughout the community.
Very much in agreement, Councilwoman, and what we're thinking is baby steps. We want to start somewhere, but very easy to branch out. I'm holding the training packet right here that was put together, again, through hundreds of hours, identifying what messages needed to be shared. Because it's so simple, and the training is an hour?
Can be done in an hour, yes.
We should be able to reach many, many people, and just identifying specialty groups that you have spoken of, it's pretty simple.
It's a wonderful idea. I mean, I'm absolutely supportive of, it's just such a critical mission that you're on. I guess I'm more than anxious to have it spread further, faster. But thank you for all the work you've done, for everybody involved.
Councilmember Pastor?
So, now you're making me think more. I'm thinking right now, and I know it starts in August, but really, I know. And so it's starting in August, I know the pilot's going to start. Is it possible to start training some people currently, just to kind of, I know it's a pilot, but really start testing out the curriculum through the summer, and then tweak a little bit, and then move? I don't know.
Thank you for having us here, by the way, and for this discussion. We love to think about new ideas. When you look at the number of tragedies that we have in our community, we really need to think outside the box. A couple of things we were always mindful of in the development of this program, we didn't want to rush forward and have a product that was substandard. We want to make sure that what we teach the community is credible, and the people who are working with the community are teaching correctly and representing the effort well. The other challenge was to really make use of the existing resources, places like the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA. The intention is not to reinvent the wheel, but to make the citizens aware of the great resources that already exist within this community, by way of a resource guide where we can share resources, and this is the kind of a program that can reach a tipping point. We begin to talk about one aspect, somebody else jumps on board, pretty soon we're talking about CPR, we're learning where we can take swimming lessons, and that's when real behavioral change occurs.
Got it.
You know, I also want to recognize Vice Mayor Valenzuela for being one of the co-chairs in this committee. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Councilman Chairman Nowakowski. First, I want to thank you for opening up this meeting and allowing me to take part on, for this discussion. I miss being on the Public Safety Subcommittee, see all the faces, and you're tasked with a Subcommittee that highlights the number-one priority of any government, which is public safety, so thank you for all of your efforts. And for the members, excuse me, on this, on this page here, which includes everyone here at the table, Becky Hewlett and Sonia Smith and everyone else, Deanna, Chief Jameson, and of course Tiffany Isaacson, who I had a chance to work with for many years when it comes to this type of work. The commitment is certainly there. I do appreciate opening this up. Of course, the Phoenix Fire Department is going to be involved, you know, it's what firefighters do, but there's so many people who are also involved, people at the aquatics, you know, center, every lifeguard, every person in an emergency room at a hospital, but even deeper than that, every school teacher, every classmate, every sibling, every aunt or uncle or grandparent, I mean, the entire community is brought to its knees every time another child is lost due to a drowning. And Chief Jameson, excuse me, I'm glad that you mentioned something when it comes to these drowning victims. When we watch the news and we hear that there was a near drowning incident, when a child has survived that drowning, I think, I think we allow Hollywood to take over where we just know that that child is okay and that child will live a healthy life. But the reality is, every child that we lose due to drowning, so many others, will live with lifelong disabilities due to nearly drowning. Kids that we'll never see again or walk again, the entire quality of life is different, not only for that child, but the caregivers, and this is something that absolutely has to be, you know, dealt with, continue to be dealt with, because I don't want to give the impression that work and good work isn't happening. There's a lot of great work happening every day out there, but drownings on the, if you talk to a firefighter, they will tell you, I will tell you, that of all the incidents that I've ever responded to or will continue to respond to, this is the one that is 100% preventable, a child drowning. And when I talk to our police officer brothers and sisters, they will tell you most likely about the DUI. That is the incident that is 100% preventable. And, and, you know, too many people's lives are being changed because, because of these incidents. So I do appreciate the effort. I appreciate just how robust this is, and I really appreciate, you know, Chief Cockburn, thank you for leading the way here, getting your phone call recently just to let me know that, you know, this is far too important. It's, sure, it's a pilot, that's where we are, that's where these programs must begin, but it's too important to begin with just certain parts of the city. This is happening throughout the entire city. And to have a citywide pilot on something like as important as this topic is absolutely the right thing to do. So, so thank you for all of the effort. There's lots and lots of fingerprints on this thing, hundreds of hours, as you mentioned, Chief. And, you know, I think the other challenge that we have is, you know, there are statistics beyond statistics that tell us how many kids we lose. And Arizona, I think many, well, lots of people would be surprised to hear that Arizona is usually in the top two states when it comes to drownings. And, you know, and we don't have many large bodies of water, we don't have an ocean, but we do lead the nation when it comes to swimming pools, and even those of us who don't have a swimming pool, you know, we have a bathtub, we have a sink. Sometimes we may be guilty of leaving a bucket of water out after we, you know, mop our kitchen floor, and all it takes is just a couple of inches. So the education is the biggest component, because that is the proactive component, how do we prevent these things from happening in the first place? So thank you for, you know, for, of course, never giving up, and I do think that we're on to something. As many years as I've committed to, you know, prevention, of course, like every firefighter, I'm going to get on the truck and we're going to be reactive, but, you know, again, trying to prevent these, these incidents from happening. As many years as I've been involved with valley-wide programs as well, I've never seen anything like this. And so that's incredibly positive, and I am absolutely supportive. I want to thank Mayor Stanton for making this an important issue. You know, I mean, obviously it is, but to actually highlight it, bring this group of people together, and of course, given me the opportunity to co-chair with our Public Safety Chair and Councilman Nowakowski, who's You know, I mean, obviously it is, but to actually highlight it, bring this group of people together, and of course, given me the opportunity to, to co-chair with our public safety chair and Councilman Nowakowski, who's, I think everyone in the room realizes how committed he has been on these issues as well. So, again, I, you know, I'm appreciative and I am absolutely supportive.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gallegos?
Wonderful. Thank you to my colleagues for leading this effort and the mayor for kicking it off, as well as to all of the people who are making it happen. And thank you so much for including people who speak other languages and the refugee community. I think it's important that we share that education as broadly as possible because it is not just people who speak English who need to have this education, and that will be wonderful. We picked community centers because there'll be childcare opportunities for, well, in part because there'll be childcare opportunities for people who are participating in the class.
I believe that the idea of the community centers was a way to move this citywide. And because we have centers and staff that are working in the community, they could, they could help us identify people, stakeholders in each community that could really make an impact in those, in those communities. And so, that was the thought behind it. Yes, we have programs that parents bring their kids to those programs, so we have opportunity to also reach out to parents that are participating in programs as well.
So, we're hoping that the kids will attend these programs with their parents, then? Is that what that?
This education really is geared towards parents to under, to teach care, the parents. Clearly, this is not, the SOS program does not exclude any of the programs we're already doing, where we're already currently teaching kids about water safety and doing all of the other programs. This does not negate any of that. It just, it's the umbrella to include everything we're already doing and then add this piece to it.
I should have asked the question more simply. Will there be childcare for parents who are participating? Yes. Okay. Fabulous. Thank you. And then our packet says that we'll educate 16 trainers who will serve as advocates by educating 150 others. Are those recipients of the training or those, tell me about those 150. It's, each trainer will do one class?
At this point with the pilot program, each trainer could do multiple classes. We are going to really focus on 150 community members that have taken it to evaluate the program. So, at this point, each trainer, the 16, will go ahead and educate. We may have trainers that educate. It could be hundreds of people at this point, depending on how, how many classes they, they do. The, the idea to reach out to community leaders in the refugee population, their, their opportunity to touch 60 people at a time with one class. So, we have those opportunities. What we want to do is keep our, keep the number small that we are going to evaluate so we can go back and look at the curriculum at the end of the year and decide what changes we need to make. Is it effective? Are there things that we need to manipulate at the end of the pilot?
Wonderful. I think it's just, I join Councilwoman Williams in wanting more, so. But 150 makes sense from a survey perspective. So, many more people might get the training, 150 will be in the survey. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Well, you know, first of all, I just really, before the motion comes out, this is really a Team Phoenix approach where we have the city manager's office a part of the team. We have our parks and aquatics a part of the team, fire, we have police, we have neighborhood services, we have our P I Os involved, we have planning and development. And it, they all play a crucial role. When you talk about water safety, when you talk about planning and development, we have to make sure that every single pool has a fence around it. So, that's why we brought in the planning and development and how we can make that process easier and making sure that every pool in the city of Phoenix has a fence around it. Our P I Os is giving us that messaging and making sure that we get as much PSAs and free media that's out there as possible and actually trying to get some partnerships with the media to, to actually tell people about our story. And Neighborhood Services connecting us with the right community partners that are out there and the police and fire that actually see this on a daily basis and that are out there saving the lives and giving us that expertise of what we need to educate the parents with. What we found out is that a lot of these parents don't know how to swim and that we need to provide swimming classes, not just for children, but also for parents. So, that was one of the things that I was educated through, through this committee is that we need to train parents on how to swim also. So, I just really want to thank you all for everything you've done. And I also want to recognize an individual that, to me, is the face and the spokesperson for the city of Phoenix when it comes to water safety, Kelly. I mean, if you see Kelly, she's all around. He even has a CD out there, right? I think we're going to brand it with the, we're going to brand it with the mustache now. But once again, and this committee is, we have some experts from the private sector also. I mean, we have individuals from the media, we have individuals from Banner University Medical Center. Just thank you for your expertise and everything that you see on a daily basis when it comes to drowning. And also, the Phoenix Children's Hospital, that firsthand information that you give us and how to deal with the parents once they have a child or, or a family member that went through the drowning and what happens afterwards. And exactly what the vice mayor was talking about is that we talk about saving lives, but how are lives damaged from there on and how can we tell those stories? And also, the great partner is SRP that is always there. This is a pilot program. The reason that we're able to do this pilot program is because of good partners that we have out there. The fire and, and SRP have stepped up and provided us the materials to actually train those 16 trainers that are out there. So, we're going to gather this information. Once we gather all that data and all that information, then we're going to probably have to come back to the subcommittee and to my colleagues and ask for some, a position or some budget to, to actually support this. This is, this is the reason why it's just going out to 100 or plus individuals because it's a lack of resources that we have. So, everything, we're using in-house resources right now and with the generosity of SRP donating the materials to train the trainers. But hopefully next year, once we get all that information, data, that we can come up with some type of a budget item to continue this and, and show that the statistics of saving lives. So, once again, thank you. And I don't know who came up with that creative SOS. What a, what a great slogan, "Saving Our Summer." That's, that's a great slogan. So, thank you so much. And that's, that's a type of Team Phoenix that we have is people that are creative, people that work for the city of Phoenix, people that are in the private sector coming together to save lives. So, once again, thank you for all your hard work and thank you for saving those individuals' lives. Any other comments or motion at this time? Oh, before we make the motion, we would have to close this special session, go back into...
I move that we close this special session.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The session is now closed. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Now, we can make a motion to approve the pilot project and move it forward to the full council and wish you very well and speedy service.
All right. So, we have a motion to continue back to the subcommittee and also to pass the item. And there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much for all your hard work. And now, we're on item number five.
Five through nine, which are consent items if there's no effort to pull any of them.
Is there a second on consent items five through nine? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We're on item number 10, and we actually have a card on item number 10 also. If we can have the graffiti, Chris from Neighborhood Services come in and, and give a report on the graffiti Free Phoenix efforts. Oh, Tim's good.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the subcommittee. Chris is out of town today, so I'm Chris. And we have a report on the graffiti Free Phoenix efforts. Aaron Crowley's the deputy director that's managing that project right now. I'll turn it over to her.
Good morning, Councilmen and members of the subcommittee. We just had a brief information update for you today on our graffiti Free Phoenix Awareness Month in February. We're very happy to partner with our anti-graffiti task force, which we have our two co-chairs here today, Councilman Nowakowski and Councilwoman Gallego co-chair that. We partnered with the task force members to outreach and make sure that people were aware of this ongoing issue of graffiti and how important it is, how they can get involved, be engaged. It's an ongoing issue. We have an ongoing awareness and education campaign throughout the year, but we felt like highlighting the effort and the issue in February really would bring the attention to the forefront and give us some additional coverage and get people more involved. So, we worked with social media. We did hashtag graffiti Free Phoenix and had that everywhere. We did a press conference kicked off by our co-chairs. We also worked with our task force members. We did cleanups, graffiti removal, and our ongoing education campaign. They reached out to 28 different organizations during the month of February. It is ongoing year-round, so that's just a tip of the iceberg as to how many folks we've got out there. So, we're just very happy to report that the month of February was very successful in reaching out to a large number of folks. Also, as our task force constantly reminds us, which is very good because they are kind of our eyes and ears and keep us going in the community, we also reached out to several departments during the month and, and ongoing basis to make sure that we at the city of Phoenix are also paying attention and are constantly aware of the need to report graffiti, be vigilant, and, and take it very seriously because it does help make sure that our community remains blight-free, but also it's, it can be a gateway crime. And we want to make sure that there's no graffiti out there that, any longer than it needs to be and that the youth and adults and businesses in the community are very much aware of how they can play a role in keeping our Phoenix graffiti-free. So, that is our update. We're happy to answer any questions for you. We also do have a brochure, if anyone's interested, that we just came up with, that we use in the community, that's graffiti Free Phoenix brochure.
Well, thank you so much. We have a card. Would you mind if we, Jeannie Summers, come on down? Miss Graffiti herself.
Unfortunately, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the subcommittee, I think we need to be careful when we measure our successes by using numbers. For example, we know the gallons, number of gallons of paint used does not solve the graffiti problem, but it will take community and city engagement, not just one month, but every month, not just business owners and residents, but our police and our city employees. Our officers need to understand that graffiti is a gateway crime and taking a report about graffiti or reporting graffiti to graffiti busters is just as important as taking other crime reports. Uncontained trash drivers see graffiti in the alleys every time they go up and down our alleys. Hundreds of city employees see graffiti as they do their jobs daily on the streets. But all should be reporting graffiti, not just citizens. This is not a problem for businesses. It's not a problem, a neighborhood problem, but our city problem. We are one city. Thank you.
And Mrs. Summers, thank you for everything you do on the task force and all the great ideas. And I think it's the advocacy that on that committee has really brought us to the forefront when it comes to anti-graffiti. And it's your advocacy at the state level trying to pass those, those bills, and I know how frustrated that is and how hard it is. And I want to just really thank the task force for all their efforts.
Well, I appreciate that, sir. And just to let you know, we did have success at the legislature this year. I'm also a co-chair of the Citizens Law Enforcement Anti-Graffiti Initiative, and officers brought to us the problem of gang graffiti and wanting to separate tagging vandalism from gang graffiti. And we were successful in passing S B 1179.
Oh, thank you so much. Power of the people. Any comments? You know, I just really want to thank our, our staff. I mean, the graffiti busters program has been around for years and people are utilizing it and we're training individuals on how to use our equipment that we have and, you know, 402 gallons of paint. That's, that's quite a bit of paint to use within the month of February and having 43 groups that are out there covering that graffiti. I mean, that's what's impressive, is how we've empowered neighborhood groups to come out and take back their neighborhoods and paint out the graffiti. So, I really want to thank our staff for their efforts in organizing our neighborhoods and organizing and providing the supplies to paint out graffiti. So, thank you so much. With that, it's just, we, it's, there's no, it's information only, right? So, thank you. So, we have number, item number 11. This is information only?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you've been provided a hard copy of the report from the...
All right. Does anybody have any questions or any, or, this is just for information only if you needed an update? If not, then I'd like to go to item number 12, which is the review, revised ethics ordinance.
Good morning, members of the subcommittee. I'm here with Dan Brown, the city attorney, to follow up on our last visit with you on ethics. Dan, could you hand me the, thank you. So, when we last met with you in January, the discussion we had was requiring a disclosure for community events. And you asked us to return with some proposed ordinance language and then to return with any recommendations about an ethics inquiry process or penalties. And so, we are prepared to do that today. I did want to make sure to let you know, we do believe there would be importance in whatever activities we take, that we have an effective date for the ordinances, whether that is July 1st, so that all activity is on a going-forward basis. So, in any event, we provided you language in the report, and I'm not, unless you wish me to, going to go through all of that language point by point. It followed very specifically the requests and requirements you had us put together. But Dan is here to answer any questions you have, although he does have one clarification he wanted to make on one of the definitions. Dan?
Good morning, Chairman Nowakowski and members of the subcommittee. Yes, one of the definitions relates to, on 5E, if you can kind of quickly get to that. That is a exception to the definition of gift, and it excludes compensation for admission of food, beverages, accommodations, and transportation received by an elected official, which would be members of the council, the mayor, or an employee in their capacity as it relates to city business. And so, in looking at that, as we looked through that, that's a very broad category. And based upon the direction of this subcommittee, it's our understanding that we wanted to disclose city-sponsored events, what we call affectionately, I think, the rubber chicken events. And so, the community interest events. And so, what we would want to do is come back with a definition that clarifies that particular, that 5E exclusion, to say that any city-sponsored, the community events, those items would need to be disclosed.
And, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, the reason for this definition related to your request to us that if we are going to conduct air service missions that were funded not by the city but by GPEC, or we are going on a GPEC trip, or we're doing tourism promotion, that there is not a disclosure requirement related to those activities. We just had some thinking in the last few days that kind of caught our eye about community events. You had asked us to make sure disclosure of community events was required. We need to amend this language to ensure that that's clear. Moving, if there are...
Can we go back to that?
Sure.
Because I'm, I guess it's more the way I'm interpreting what was just said. It was said that we were going to disclose community events?
That was a specific motion of the subcommittee last time.
Okay. So, if I attend a block watch event, then I disclose that?
Uh, well...
Or are we talking community events of dinners?
This relates to the receipt of gifts and the gifts being, and one example you provided to us was gifts of admission to any number of community-oriented events. I think we all may be going to one here in shortly. That would be a prime example of the kinds of things that would need to be disclosed. If you received a ticket of entrance, this was a, but what was listed there that related to GPEC or the C V B was broad enough to incorporate these other sorts of community events, and we wanted to tell you, we, we will put some language that reflects the requirement to still disclose.
This is $50?
The...
$50 or more?
This is the, this is...
Right.
This is the, this is, that's correct.
That's what I wanted to check.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
To make it very, maybe make it easier, if we can pass in two parts, maybe?
What, I think what we would do is we would ask, when we're going to get to the end, we're going to ask for your authorization to recommend to the city council with an amendment to that, or any other things that you wish us to amend, but we're going to just request for you to have us clarify that. So if there are no other questions as to the ordinance language, then I'll move to the next piece of the presentation. And we had received some feedback from the chairman's office about some ideas possibly to pursue how to conduct ethics inquiries and possible penalties associated with any inquiry that was upheld, and so we were going to run through that with you today and ask for your direction and advice. And so what has been proposed that is contained within your packet is the process of an inquiry. So when somebody submits a comment or an inquiry of, we think something has not, a standard has not been met by a board commissioner or an elected official related to the ethics policy, broadly, the subcommittee will hear it. There is a neutral third-party fact-finder who would go collect information, report back to the subcommittee, the subcommittee would take action, and the city council would finally take action based on the subcommittee's recommendation. In all instances, anybody who would be subject to the inquiry would be conflicted from participating in the activities. So that's as a big picture, and then we'll dive into the details. When an inquiry is filed, it would be filed with the city clerk, as we do many, many things here in the city, about elected officials, board and commission members, and the whole entire council would be notified that an inquiry has been, has been received. It would be clear that there's something related to an employee, as we've described before, those would go to the city manager for his adjudication of any concerns. The inquiry would then be placed as an item on the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Public Safety Subcommittee, and the subcommittee would have a preliminary discussion of the inquiry. By three votes, they can vote to move forward and review this inquiry and evaluate the information that they may find, or they could vote at this point to dismiss the inquiry, that it is without merit, is not a necessary activity to be pursued. In the event that there is less than three votes, the same result occurs, the inquiry is closed. If the subcommittee wishes to review an ethics inquiry, the city attorney has a qualified vendor list of outside legal firms that would be drawn from, just on a rotating, this is the next in line, to have an investigator or a staff member from the, from that firm go pursue an inquiry to secure as much information as is necessary and required to help answer the questions that have been raised in the inquiry. The fact-finder would get its direction from the subcommittee, and the fact-finder would return their findings to the subcommittee. The cities, the city attorney's office would merely function as an entity to have the information passed through, but ultimately would be brought back to the subcommittee for its review and consideration and questions. Following the fact-finder's delivery of information, the subcommittee would then again convene, and by three votes, they could vote to recommend upholding some or all of the inquiry and advance a recommendation for penalties to the city council. They could have voted to dismiss the inquiry, and again, if there's less than three votes, then the inquiry is dismissed. If the subcommittee were to make a recommendation to pursue the inquiry further with the city council, it would go on the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. At the council, by seven votes, the council could vote to accept the recommendations of the subcommittee and impose the recommended penalties, could vote to change the recommendation and impose a different penalty, could vote to dismiss the inquiry. If in the event there's less than seven votes, again, the inquiry is dismissed. Finally, in the proposal, the penalties would be censure, which is just merely a formal sense of the city council that, that an inquiry has been upheld and that a standard of care with the ethics policy has not been met, up to a $500 fine or some combination of both. And I think Dan has something additional to comment here for you.
Yeah. Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee, the other item I just want to make the subcommittee aware of, there is a general section in the city code, it's actually 1-5, that provides that any violation of an ordinance or the city code is a class one misdemeanor. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, so that if you wanted the misdemeanor to apply, then we could make that clear, or if you did not want it to apply, then we would just write it as an exception. So the way that the city code is written, it says unless otherwise provided, it's a class one misdemeanor. So I just want to make sure as we sync, if you will, or work with the, these remedies, that we want to make sure that we don't inadvertently create an ambiguity. So that's one exception that I would recommend that the subcommittee make some sort of clarification or direct us to look into. The other remedies, as we think through all this, the potential I want to make you aware of, in state law, it's actually ARS 38510, it provides that if you knowingly or intentionally violate the conflict of interest laws that we all work, that is a class six felony, and that's already provided in state law. If you negligently or at a lower level violate the law, it is a, also a class one misdemeanor. So those, those are, those remedies are already provided in state law. The other remedies in state law, if there is a conflict and a elected official votes on it, then the, if it's a contract, that contract is voided, and if someone is affected by that vote, they're allowed to bring a civil action. So I want to kind of, just so you have kind of a broad understanding of what the remedies are already in place as far as in the city code and in state law. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. On the state law, how that, past history, if I recall, it was actually considered a criminal act, not just an ethics violation? Is that how that's applied?
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Williams, yes. Well, if it's a violation of the state conflicts of interest law, it is actually considered a crime. It's a class one misdemeanor at the lowest level, and then it's a class six felony. So if there's, depending upon the level of the culpable action.
Example, took money for a vote. Which one applies, or do both? I mean, would you go by whatever's the strongest penalty?
The way it would work would be the strongest penalty, so that would, penalty, so that would be a class six felony, and that would be prosecuted under current jurisdiction, it would be prosecuted by the county attorney.
Okay. So at that point, we wouldn't do anything on the ethics side? That would be a criminal case and proceed down that line?
That's correct. And then at some point later down the road, the city, if it wished, the council could pursue the ethics violation under the city code. So that's generally how it works with multi-jurisdictional authority.
I do think, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams, if you receive an ethics inquiry, we would need to say in the code that if there are other actions of law enforcement, that those will continue and this would come after. We would need to be specific about that in order to make sure we aren't, and somehow, well, we're not acting on something when it may be more appropriate to wait in line and let these things happen.
And...
Could you add that as a two?
Yes.
And, and make that clear that there are other codes that are applicable and that
could take precedence or this?
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Williams, that's, that's, I would recommend that. And so when we get an initial inquiry, and let's suppose, let's assume that the subcommittee votes to pursue it further, there is a review or an investigation, and it, and the investigation shows that there is a possible felony, at that point, I think it would be the recommendation for the subcommittee to stand down and then refer it to the proper authority for further review and investigation. That would be my advice to the, the subcommittee.
Could I? I just want to thank the chair and his staff. I think you've come up with a policy recommendation that is fair, it's reasonable. I think it is something that not only the council, but boards and commission members can clearly understand. It is not draconian and discouraging people from serving on boards, commissions, or running for the council. I, I think you've done an excellent job, and I believe with the amendments that we've just discussed, that this is something that is very important that we can act on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Do you want me to make a motion? I have questions. So right now with the inquiry, it goes to public safety unless the member who's subject to the inquiry is on public safety, and then it goes to another subcommittee? Could we just perhaps suggest, pick out of a hat of subcommittees, that, I feel like we should not be silent on which subcommittee?
That, I think we're pleased to take your direction. I think there could be alternative, and I want, we want to follow your direction. Alternative way could be also to say we pull out of a hat, the remaining council members not on the subcommittee, and for the purposes of this issue, they sit on the subcommittee. That's, that's...
Right. I just don't think we should be silent. I mean, we could, we could say if it doesn't go to public safety, it goes to TNI.
And I agree. It has to be a subcommittee that, if it were a council person, doesn't serve on. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So I was thinking you'd take, get rid of all the subcommittees on which this person serves on, and then pick out of a hat.
Okay.
That would work.
Okay. I just think we, if this happens...
Right.
It would be better to set the rules...
No.
To think of something that is fair to everyone than to think of, than when you're in the middle of it, and...
We think that's, that's, I think that's great advice, and so I just want to be, be clear, because there's multiple people on multiple subcommittees, sometimes nearly all. My only suggestion...
But there's no one on all, so we would just pick out of a hat of the ones on which the person...
Person isn't serving on. Okay. I'm quite fine with whatever you want to do, and so that, that would be great. So that's fine. Happy to do that.
And then my second question is related to the fact-finder, and I just think there is possibly, we should think about the circumstances in which the fact-finder could go on a very long fact-finding mission that would be expensive to the city and that we might want to have a little bit more of a process in how we select the fact-finder, so I wanted to suggest two options. One is a committee would, maybe three people would assist, two additional people assist the city attorney, and that the committee should have some partisan diversity, so people of more than one political party, to try to get a fair fact-finder. Or the second is that we would have two fact-finders of different political parties who could also, we hope, have balance. So I don't, have not thought through the implications of either way, I just...
Can we find a fact-finder that's nonpartisan? Because the city is supposed to be nonpartisan.
I mean, we could ask for a fact-finder who has not, like, I think with the Citizens Clean Elections Commission, they ask for a fact-finder who's not, or for members who have not made political contributions. I just, I don't want someone to launch their political career as a fact-finder and not get a good outcome.
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, we'll clearly take whatever direction you want to give to us about how, in the selection of who's an appropriate fact-finder from the QVL list, qualified vendor list, that the, that the law department has, but I want to be really clear that the expectation, at least Dan and I, our interpretation of what we received, was that the subcommittee would be the director of the work of the fact-finder, that the fact-finder is, while they may be a neutral in the sense of they don't have skin in the game, they're, they're working at the direction of the subcommittee, and the specific questions that the subcommittee wants answered, not in a, not, and not being in a position to have their own agenda. So they're merely not us. They are an outside party who is at your direction, going to do the work, and I'm pretty confident Dan could provide pretty prescriptive requirements of fact-finders in terms of their latitude of investigation being deferred to the subcommittee that is reviewing the issue, but...
And Chairman, Councilwoman Gallego, what we could also do is I could present three fact-finders for the subcommittee from which to choose, and so that they would feel the most comfortable in, there's something like that, that I could recommend three, so, and then subcommittee, something like that, so that you can take the partisanship out of that. If that's, I'm willing to work with any direction that the subcommittee might provide. There's something like that that we could do. The other, the only other place that I'm aware of in city structure where there's a requirement for partisanship is the civil service board. There is a, you know, there has to be a certain number from each party, and then with the neutral. So that, that, there are some boards and commissions throughout the city where that is been previously addressed. Short of that, it's generally not listed as far as party affiliation, by way of information.
Any other discussion?
So my understanding of the process is that it, there's an inquiry, it'll go to the subcommittee, and at that moment, the subcommittee will determine if they move forward on the inquiry or not. And then if they move forward, it is up to the subcommittee to give directives or directions to the fact-finder and staff as to what are we looking for.
That is absolutely correct.
That's correct.
We, in no way do we believe there's an independent third party operating here. It is just merely someone who is not the city, who is conducting the stepwise requirements. And so without getting into a precise situation, I believe the subcommittee can provide a very prospective charge that says the fact-finder needs to go look for these things. If you have suggestions along the way, you need to come back to the subcommittee, and we will decide.
So I guess my question, it's now led me to a bigger question. In the, in the makeup of subcommittees?
Mm-hmm.
Because in the makeup of subcommittees is determined by the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever's sitting as the mayor, they're going to determine who sits on those subcommittees. Okay.
That's true.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of future.
Well, the other thing, too, is that fact-finders are a list of vendors that we have that are just chosen at a random rate?
Through procurement.
Correct. Chairman Noakowski, that's, yes, we, we go out every two years for a solicitation for outside counsel, and, you know, we have a list of outside law firms which we could make available to the subcommittee, and, you know, I, again, we can function and serve the subcommittee as they wish and direct, and what we, we do is we issue letters of engagement that prescribe the scope of work, and so that would be my recommendation to the subcommittee as they move forward, that we limit the scope of work so that we don't give someone a blank check to, to pursue whatever interest they may have. It would be subject to the subcommittee's direction.
Now, choosing those vendors, do we look at party affiliation, or is it, is that a qualification to it, or...
Chairman Noakowski, generally not, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want us to keep in mind that it's never happened to a council member, ever. And as far as I know, it only happened one time, and that was someone serving on a board, and that was 25 years ago, or pretty close to it. And I don't want us to kill this because we get too mired in some details when the odds are, we have very honorable people serving on our boards and commissions, and quite frankly, as an elected official, you work hard to get here. You're really not going to take the chance or make the effort to deliberately screw it up because you value the position and honor the office. So I am not so concerned about that, on who's the fact-finder, because I think as it comes back, we can always ask the questions.
Mr. Chair, members of the, of the subcommittee, perhaps a combination of multiple Mr. Chair, members of the, of the subcommittee, perhaps a combination of multiple things that have been suggested is the selection of the fact finder can be, as Dan said, I'll give, here's the three names that are next up. Provide those to the subcommittee and if none of those are acceptable, we'll go to the next three names as, as required. And then, second, a specific delineation that the fact finder's scope is, is at the direction of the city council, at the subcommittee of the city council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was wondering if there needs to be any clarity over, under what conditions the subcommittee could go into each session when you're deciding penalty, discuss penalties, or does it all have to be out in the open?
Chairman Noakowski, that's an excellent suggestion. Actually, with the fact finder, because they are legal counsel, we would need to notice, just post the notice under open meeting law, that they could go into executive session to discuss, you know, the findings of, of, of the fact finder and how to proceed. So, yes, it would need to be in executive session. And current state law provides for that, but to the extent, to the extent that we can clarify that option in this process, I think it would be advisable.
You know, I, I feel very comfortable. I mean, I work along with all my different colleagues and we really work on a nonpartisan effort. I mean, there's times where I vote different than what my party affiliation would want me to vote. So, I believe that we represent the city of Phoenix, all of us, and I have great respect for all my colleagues. And I think we'll do the right thing. I mean, we're looking at 25 years ago that inquiry was brought to, to us as a council. So, I think that we have a pretty good record and I just don't want to really detour volunteers in sitting on our boards and commissions and, and blowing this up into something that it's not. I agree with Councilmember Williams that this is important. It's something that we need to have in case something does happen in the future. It's great to update our, our ethics policy and to have it updated is something that's very important for the city of Phoenix. And I feel very comfortable with the verbiage and, and the couple changes and modifications that we're going to do to it. And the process of if it, if there's a conflict, somebody on this subcommittee, the suggestion from Councilmember Gallegos is to actually put all those subcommittees in a hat and draw that, that committee out. I like that suggestion. That's, I'll be voting in favor of this item.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to move this forward with our recommendation of approval with the amendments that we've just discussed and recommended and bring us back the language. I don't know if that has to come back to us. If you would at least give us a precopy, because I, I know the mayor is very anxious to get this to full council and get it approved.
Councilman Noakowski, Councilwoman Williams, it would maybe help Dan and I to make sure we recount what we thought we heard because I don't want to, we, we don't want to miss. And then, second, I, I would just want your advice, but I think we would be prepared to reduce what we have discussed here on, to an, to ordinance language and then come back and visit with the subcommittee. And if in our informal conversation with you, you see no objections, then we would advance to the next appropriate council, city, full city council meeting, whether policy or formal, to hear the item completely. But that's, that's in the form of, I'll, we'll do, if you wish us to come back again, we think we're prepared, based on your direction, to reduce what you see into ordinance language. We can share it with the subcommittee, get your feedback. If there's any material concerns, we can always come back to the subcommittee. But...
Can you, you need a second? Second?
Then, if I could, then, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want it in a timely manner so that then I can read it, look at it, and then have a discussion and then ponder on it and then be able to ask other questions before it goes to. So, I'm not sure at what point it's going to go to full council.
Councilman Noakowski, Councilwoman Pastore, I think Dan and I could get something put together in the next week or two for you on reducing this to ordinance language. And then, we would work whether with the mayor's office or the city manager's office about finding a right schedule that provides you all the opportunity to review the language and, and, and share with Dan and I any feedback you have of things you believe are necessary to correct or adjust so that we can bring those in to the full council, if that's an appropriate way. So, we would try to bring some...
So, we're looking at end of May, beginning of June for it to go to full council?
Right. We would go when, when we have confidence that you are comfortable, that we don't need to come back to subcommittee.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Chairman, with, with your, with your permission, I'd walk through, so, I think the first thing is in the ordinance language you had is a reference that we need to adjust, that definition of, that Dan described to you right from the beginning of the presentation to reflect that community events are not, are required to have disclosure. That's not an exception. That would be of the first amendment. I think the second is that if the public safety subcommittee has a member sitting on it that has a conflict, that then the remaining subcommittees of the city council, where there is no conflict, would be at, would be the pool from, from which we would randomly select the subcommittee who would hear the issue that is being inquired about. Third, is that in the selection of a fact finder, that the city attorney would provide three options from an approved qualified vendors list to select from, for the relevant subcommittee to have an opinion about which of those they are comfortable with. Fourth, that the, this work scope for the fact finder is at the discretion of the subcommittee. And the subcommittee will define the contours of what is both on a preliminary basis and in the end, the set of inquiries that the fact finder will go pursue. And then, fifth, if in the event of the fact finder potentially identifying something that appears to be subject to the state law requirements related to conflict of interest and that there appears to be a violation in state law, that the process would involve the subcommittee standing down until the appropriate body outside the city, whether the county attorney or others, draws to a conclusion, their examination of the issue. And if, when they've brought it to a closure, then it could return back to the subcommittee to be carried forward in whatever manner the subcommittee wished.
We were going to put something in as an item two under potential penalties, I believe, Dan. You talked about you could talk about the statutes or other, you know, that say...
We will, we will, and then so, six, thank you, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams. We would add that potential penalties already existing in state law, we would, we would reference that in the, we would reference the state law current penalties as a restatement inside of whatever text we brought back to you.
And, excuse me, Chair and Councilwoman Williams. Also, I guess for my purposes, so that I, I know I have clear direction, do we want to accept out the class one misdemeanor as generally provided or do we want to retain it? That's kind of a policy decision for this.
Mandatory?
At this point, yes. If it doesn't say, if there's, the way that section one dash five reads, if, if there, if no penalty is specifically addressed, then it applies and that it's a $250 fine, which we've already addressed up here, and a class one misdemeanor.
Would it be removal from the office of position?
No. It would just be, the, state law currently provides that the elected official would be removed from office only if convicted of a class six felony, which is the knowing and intentional violation of the conflict of interest. So, it would not.
Would it limit us that we couldn't go over the 250 to go to the 500?
Uh, no. The way that you've got, the way that it is proposed now, this would control, so the 500 would apply. You could go above 500, up to 2,500 if, if the subcommittee wishes. But at this point, the general violation under section one dash five is $250 per violation and a class one misdemeanor.
But we don't have to impose a class one misdemeanor?
So, you don't have to impose it if, if you want to accept it out.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams...
In that case, I think we should, I don't know.
Yeah, you, if, if this represents the intent of the body, then we would need to provide language that says this will represent the only penalties for this section of the code.
Correct.
If you wish to allow the misdemeanor to apply, then you would, you could stay silent.
Correct.
Or could we put it in May, which gives us the option?
Well, the, the way that the charter reads, that if, if the council, if the subcommittee wishes to pursue the remedy of a class one misdemeanor, that charge would need to be pursued through the, the city prosecutor and the municipal court.
In that case, my preference would be to accept it out because if it's really serious, it falls under state statute and real penalties apply.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest would be.
I agree with that.
So, as I, as I understand, then we will go ahead and accept out the class one misdemeanor portion of it. And then, the remaining penalties as stated above would apply. Okay.
And then, we will, we think in the next about 10 days at most, return back to you individually to share with you what we've written and, and make sure that, based on your feedback, that there's not a need to come back to the subcommittee and that we could pursue, proceed to the council. And we will only make that choice after we've had the benefit of the conversation with you. So, whatever time that requires will be what it requires. And I think that represents, Mr. Chair, just my attempt to summarize what I think you've told us.
Right. Any other discussions or questions?
I just really want to thank my colleagues for all their time and efforts on, on the ethics policy for the city of Phoenix. It was a tough issue. It took us quite a bit of time, but we finally, we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. And also, staff for all your hard work and, and my staff for, for collaborating with all the other chiefs of staffs and making this all possible. So, thank you all. And with that, we'll have a vote on the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Now, we're on item number 13, the update of police hiring and recruitment. So, last time Chief Yonner, we took at heart that it wasn't going to be the Yonner show anymore. So, we, we kind of shifted it for you, right?
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, we're here today to talk about our update on our police hiring. We're very appreciative of your support. Hiring police officers is one of our main priorities and we're really looking forward to this coming year as far as hiring. With me today, I have newly promoted Assistant Chief Mike Curtinbach and Lieutenant Anthony Lopez. Mike is in charge of our hiring and outreach efforts and is going to do the presentation today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. It is critically important that we, as a police department, are reflective of the community that we serve. And under Chief Yonner's leadership, we have had the opportunity recently to assemble a police officer recruitment team that we believe will allow us to accomplish just that. Now, this team was selected after an exhaustive process and just came online last Monday, March 30th. We have several members of the team that are here today. What I would like to do is take the opportunity to introduce them to you. Guys, if you would stand. We have with us the leader of the recruitment team, Sergeant Troy Holland, Officer Chris McLeod, Officer Liz Ruelas, Officer Andrea Alexander, and Officer Tu Fan. There are two other members of the team that are not with us today, Officer Scott Stoughton and Officer Julio Cardenas. Because they're doing exactly what we want them to do, they are out at a job fair right now at Mesa Community College. But these are the ones that are doing the heavy lifting for us and that's why I thought it was so important to introduce them to you. Now, as Chief Yonner said, we as a department are thrilled to be in a position for the first time in six years to actively recruit and hire for the position of police recruit and lateral police officer. We recognize that it was not be possible without this body as well as the full council and the mayor's support. Now, to provide proper context, we have not had a Phoenix Police Department recruit in a class since January of '09. In January of '09, we had six recruits in that class. We have to go back to April of '08, which was the last time that we had a academy class that was dedicated entirely to Phoenix police officers, and that was a class with 56 recruits. That is, of course, the exception being the class that we have ongoing right now, which began with 10 recruits. Very, very blessed to have them. And what I want to do is just take a moment to talk about some of our strategies for ensuring that we do, in fact, embrace the diversity that is the city of Phoenix and recruit the most qualified applicants for the position of police recruit. The list that I'm about to give you is by no means meant to be inclusive, but again, it's just a snapshot to give you an idea. Now, this weekend, our recruitment team will staff a booth graciously provided by our partners at the Parks Department at the Phoenix Pride Festival at Steel Indian School Park. On April 25th and 26th, our recruitment team will be at Arizona's Ultimate Women's Expo at the Phoenix Convention Center. And it's important to note that we recognize that there are people in our community that might not necessarily want to be sworn police officers. We are always recruiting for our communication staff and other civilian positions within the department, and our communication staff will be with us at the Women's Expo. We are also attending job fairs and participating in recruitment programs at ASU, U of A, NAU, Grand Canyon University, and all of our local community colleges. We will also ensure that these institutions receive updates in our recruitment efforts to include mailings and contact information for all of our recruiters. We will give presentations to our active duty military veterans and attend job fairs at military installations throughout the state and beyond the state when it's appropriate to do so. We will continue to utilize social media to get the word out about our recruitment efforts to include Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, and also use traditional media outlets to include but not limited to La Vos, The Arizona Informant, The Asian Sun, for example. And along those lines, we recognize that we have our community response squad right here on the Phoenix Police Department that has liaisons to our various advisory boards. Under Chief Yonner, we have nine different advisory boards that we have the opportunity to tap into with our recruiters and those liaisons. I had the opportunity on March 26th to conduct a presentation for our African American Advisory Board. And just last week, Chief Yonner and I conducted a presentation for the Hispanic Advisory Board on April 2nd. Now, our most recent open recruitment for police recruit has produced some very positive results. I'm going to turn the floor over here to Lieutenant Lopez in just a moment. And I think it's important, as you listed the numbers that Lieutenant Lopez provides you, we're able to get these very positive numbers without the benefit of our recruitment team being in full effect. So, I'll turn the floor over to Lieutenant Lopez.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. I'm Anthony Lopez. Our report today provides a quick snapshot of what we finished off in 2014, which was that we held four police written exams followed by four physical agility assessments. 1,300 people roughly signed up for those tests. About half of those actually showed up to take the tests. And in the months since then, over 300 background packets have hit the office. We used the fruits of that labor to build the class of 10 police recruits that Chief Curtinbach referred to, and we are now moving forward. In February, we did a testing for laterals, and we will continue to have an open recruitment for laterals throughout 2015. The most recent recruitment occurred and finished a couple weeks ago. Our HR partners helped us out with that. We announced two tests for 2015, one to take place on April 18th and again on June 5th. Nearly 1,000 people signed up for those two tests in the week that followed, and those recruitments are now closed. There will be additional recruitments offered throughout 2015 to meet our hiring goals. I can tell you that I was encouraged by the, the self-reported racial and gender makeup of these folks for these recruitments. Specifically, nearly 20% of all applicants self-reported as being female. 10% self-reported as being black or black and another race. And in the strongest area is for Hispanics, so over a third of all applicants self-registered as Hispanic. And this is very promising to me and in the light of the fact that the recruiting team has barely gotten started. And so, moving forward, you know, our literature and our strategies... And so, moving forward, you know, our literature and our strategies as summarized by Chief Kurtenbach will speak to the issues and will help us reach underrepresented groups, but the real recruiting begins with the face-to-face contact that our recruiting team is going to be having now in our community. And I look forward to coming back maybe later this year to provide future updates on our hiring as we move forward with the recently introduced enhanced hiring plan.
With that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Gallego.
The District Eight African-American Advisory Council had a great presentation on issues, and I learned information that was new to me about some of the common reasons that African-American applicants were disqualified, and I was wondering if I think that might be of interest to my colleagues as well, if you might mention that.
I think I represented, had a meeting with a group of your constituents a few months ago, and I made an observation that in the studies that I've conducted, I do attrition studies, and I study very carefully the data that comes through the office for the hiring unit. And I made an observation in trying to study the, what was impacting attrition for all the groups that come through. And I noticed that the disqualification category of financials was an area that was troublesome to African-Americans. And I made that observation with the idea that I, as the steward of that process, recognized that, but also recognized this was during the last time we hired between 2005 and 2008, and a lot of things have happened in our community since then, most notably the Great Recession, and that we see things on credit reports of our applicants now than, more now than we did in the past. Things like short sales and foreclosures are more common now, and I just wanted to, and I mentioned that to say that as the steward of the process, I recognize that and would challenge myself to ensure that we're looking at the whole person and not just isolate maybe a financial issue as a reason for disqualifying somebody. So I think that was something that you had noted. I just wanted to mention that.
I just think it's that that, many, many of my constituents have financial problems, particularly related to housing, and it's good if we are trying to proactively say that's not something that should disqualify you if you want to be, I think, many, many people, I mean, having some bumps in your past maybe helps you be a good peace officer and understand that people, none of us are perfect. And so I think if we're conscious of and really look into why people are ineligible, because we will not infrequently get comments from individuals saying, you know, I had a marijuana problem years and years ago, but I really want to be part of the police force, and just concerns over a foreclosure. And I think we ought to be very open about the conversation we have and that we are trying to address different issues that might disqualify people who maybe could be great officers. So we are trying to, right now, if you have a foreclosure, you can still be a police officer.
Yes, ma'am, you can. We'll be looking at the whole person and not allowing just a single financial issue to have a catastrophic effect on your application process to become a police recruit.
Wonderful. And if you did use marijuana at a time in your, could you speak to that if?
Yeah, I sure can. Basically, according to the, our rules right now, you cannot have experimented with marijuana in the last three years, and that is consistent with the current Aspost policy.
And medical marijuana?
You know, the first test case for that has not crossed my desk yet.
Okay.
I can tell you that our background investigators work closely with the compliance officers at Aspost, and if we have any questions whatsoever with our interpretation of the Arizona rules, we will work with our compliance officers to make sure we're making the right decision. So I can't speak to an incident yet on that, but I'm sure it's coming.
But I think there is some misinformation in the community that if you use marijuana in high school, you can't be a member of the Phoenix Police Department, and we are saying three years.
Now, if your high school experience is more than three years ago, and that is the main criteria for that, so hopefully that will be more than three years ago, and you will be eligible to apply.
Wonderful. We just have gotten some feedback from the community that they feel like we're disqualifying people who would make great officers, and so I think it's important that we tell this story and get out there and say, no one is perfect, and here's what does disqualify you and what doesn't. I did want to ask about, I know we're not probably going to be asking people about their religious background, but I do believe that people from the Sikh community, Jewish community, Muslim community maybe face different challenges because of their religious faith, and so could we speak a little bit about getting this information out in front of people of diverse religious backgrounds?
And, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gallego, as you know, we have advisory boards that represent all of those committees. They represent three of our nine advisory boards, so that's why that aforementioned partnership between our Community Response Squad and our recruiters is so critical. And it helps us address that misinformation issue as well. What Chief Yonner and I have been doing with Lieutenant Lopez and his team is looking at all of our standards, because we haven't hired substantively in over six years, and ensuring that our standards are consistent with Post, because we don't want to exclude qualified candidates. We want to be inclusive of the most qualified candidates as possible, and that messaging is so important as well. The misinformation that you talked about, we'll address that. We'll address that with these specific communities. You had previously mentioned, I know you have an interest in our refugee communities, where we'll be very conscious about our outreach to our refugee communities as well, because, again, we want to expand the pool of qualified applicants, not limit that pool.
I actually did not know we had a Sikh advisory board. Could you remind us of the advisory boards that we have?
I can. So we have our African-American, Hispanic, LGBTQ advisory boards, Arab, Asian, Muslim, Jewish, and Sikh, and Native American.
Wonderful. Well, it would be great to have all of their partnership to make sure that we share this information as much as possible. And yes, applause, that was very impressive. A very unfair question, but you rose to the occasion, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Earning those stars. Thank you.
Councilmember Pastore, have a question?
It's going back to an applicant, and I happen to be part of a process where students apply for a program. There's limited funding, limited scholarships, and sometimes we, there are benchmarks or categories as to, I don't even know how to say it, as to looking at different sections. And so sometimes, in those categories, when I have to make some decisions as to who do I think is the most diverse, who will make the most impact in this program, who will thrive and go on and do great things, at the end of the day, it becomes a subjective decision. And so sometimes I have a candidate or a student that is equal all the way through until a certain section. And then we start to say, okay, what do you think? Boom, boom, boom. And so I think sometimes there are categories where that's where somebody will bounce out. Could, is a potentially good candidate, but this one happens to be, they're even, but this one happens to be a little slightly higher by one point. And so I think that's what sometimes you guys face in looking at candidates and possible police officers and in looking at the whole picture and figuring out, you know, who will best relate and defend and protect our city and our neighborhoods. And so I applaud you for that, because that's a difficult decision to make. And it's very difficult in the sense of everybody's qualified, but at the end of the day, we have to make a decision in order to move a group through. So I just want to applaud you for that, because I understand some of the difficult decisions that are being made, and hopefully those are placed on a waitlist for then a future cohort. So, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm, my question's about psych evals. I am very concerned how in-depth we go. I know that you're talking about some laterals, and we've read so much in the papers and all the incidents that have occurred throughout the nation. And I had something recently come to my attention of someone who's applied, who's a reserve officer, who brags about beating up mentally ill people in uniform. And I'm wondering, what are you doing? How are you doing it? And how in-depth do you go?
We do administer a psychological evaluation to all of our applicants. There is a full report provided. It's usually five or six pages from the person doing that. We would probably have to come back to you, Councilwoman Williams, to explain in further detail all the areas in the psychological evaluation, but it is a tool for us to pick the best people. I can tell you that the evaluation is designed to find the outliers that will not be suitable to be issuing a badge and a gun to, you know, those folks. But to get down to the nuts and bolts, and if you want more detail on that, I'd probably have to revisit that in a future meeting to explain all the different, the verbal report and the pencil and paper tests that the applicants take. They take several hours. In fact, they schedule a morning and an afternoon session with the applicant so they can get through the tests and then to also do the interview with them. But we use the reports as a tool in the hiring process. About 90 to 95% of all applicants get a passing score on the psychological evaluation, and then there's notes in the evaluation that helps us determine whether applicants may struggle academically in the academy. We try to take that into account in our hiring decisions, but I could, I would have to get back with you if you wanted more detail on that.
I would like you to do that, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Well, Chief, I really want to thank you. I mean, it's hard to go out there and try to find the best of the best, and you got a great team that's out there. Officer Lopez, thank you for everything you're doing, and the recruiters, I mean, they look like a tough, tough group of recruiters out there, so thank you so much, and bring us the best of the best, right? And, you know, I was really impressed to see that you went out there and out of the 10 recruits, five of them were actually reserve officers. I know that those reserve officers during the hard times were out there, and they were really helping us out and going through the academy and all that, and to have five of them that are actually transitioning to full-time status is great, so thank you for looking at those reserve officers also. And I guess it's the Joe Yonner Show. We're up to item number 14.
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, Mike Kurtenbach is here with us, but also Matt Giordano, who is our newly promoted commander of our Community Relations Bureau, and we formed this squad or in the process of forming this squad, and we're going to be brief. I know we're pressed for time, so Matt's going to run through about five minutes of the squad, and then we'll answer any questions.
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee, thanks for having me this morning. I will be brief, like the chief said. We just wanted to come before you and just give you a brief overview of where we're going in the future. We are, under Chief Yonner's direction, we are creating what we call a crisis intervention squad. That squad is going to be responsible for going out, picking up, and serving those mental health pickup orders for approximately 4,000 citizens every year. What we do now is we, our model is a one sergeant and two patrol officers response to these incidents. One of those officers must be a certified CIT officer, certified officer. I mean, that's working very well, but we're looking for ways to increase our level of service while making ourselves more efficient. Taking this model here, again, we're going to use one sergeant, which we're currently in the process of recruiting. It closed last Friday. We're going to interview those applicants next week and select that squad sergeant, and then we'll go forward with the recruitment for six highly-trained officers that we can bring in, provide them with additional training, additional skills, and then send them out and to work on picking up these emergency order, serving these court-ordered mental health pickups. What will we be doing with these officers? Will we be giving them, if they're not already CIT-trained, will we be giving them the 40-hour block of CIT training? We'll be providing them tactical training. We're providing them additional communication skill training to make them very efficient. What I'm really excited for is to move forward of this program, see how successful it is, and come back to you six months, a year from now, and show you all the successes, the challenges, and the things we've done to make, again, to make it more efficient for the police department, as well as making a higher level of service to the community we serve. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have actually one card. Should we go ahead and call Walt Gray or come on up?
Thank you, Councilman Noakowski and subcommittee. I would just, just a couple observations is that I'm, one, I would like to comment on the recruiting part. If the psychological evaluation is conducted by a psychologist or psychiatrist, I think that might be a question. Secondly, the, regarding the CI, this critical enforcement team, I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering if it's been reviewed by the mental health committee? There should be a mental health advisory committee, that that be reviewed with the mental health advisory committee, that the training that these people receive, particularly the, well, all of them, the sergeant particularly, be evaluated by the mental health advisory committee. Also, the mental health community has a mobile crisis intervention team, and how those two teams could work together, because police officers seem to be trained for enforcement. And the mobile crisis intervention team of the mental health community is a little different. They're trained more to do the best thing for the long term for that individual rather than just the short term. So, you know, I think 4,000 of these a year, and you have one or two that make the papers or three or four, two or three that make the papers, but often that is, you know, with a loss of life or a serious injury. So I think the record is pretty good, but I think we can be better. I think we should not, you know, and then also, this is the court-ordered pickups. What about the calls when people are acting strange or threatening? And those seem to be the ones that are most difficult to handle. And although all the police officers are going to get training, this team might also have an application in that area. Thank you.
Any comments from my, from the committee? Councilmember Williams?
I'm delighted you're doing this. I guess what I would like to see on a future agenda kind of corresponds with this, because the closure at CAS, and we know a lot of those people are mentally ill, I would like to have a report maybe next month or so, saying if that's impacted your squad, how it has impacted the neighborhoods, and have you come back and explain what's going on?
Great point. And then the, is there a psychologist that's a part of the recruit team or the process?
Simple answer, Mr. Chairman, is yes.
And then I think one of the concerns I would have is working with the mobile crises team is that these are orders to pick up individuals, so I think that we, after we refer people when they call us and ask us for help, we can refer them to the mobile crises team, but I would think there would be some liability or something like that with an order of pickup. Is that correct, or?
Chairman Noakowski, you're correct. And Mr. Gray was spot-on. Officers respond to people in crisis, and if they don't have a mental health pickup order, we're not taking them. We're not taking them for treatment because we don't have that authority at that point unless we see something while we're dealing with them that were there a threat to themselves or others. In those cases, when we do recognize that someone is in crisis, we do reach out to our mobile crisis team, have them come out, officers stand by to make sure the peace is kept, and that person gets the services right there and then that they need.
And then, Chief, I just really want to thank you for creating this squad, and I know that you have limited resources, and you've been doing everything you can. I know that my colleagues and I are really advocates in making sure that you have those resources and the budget to actually go out there and train, and I'm glad to see that this year's budget, we have some monies there for training of our officers and that you already are in that process. So thank you so much for all your hard efforts.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right, we're on item number 15, future agenda items. Any of my colleagues have any future agenda items?
That training is at the top of my list.
All right.
More about the 40 hours of training.
All right, the train, if we can get an update on the 40-hour training for police officers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we were going to do it this morning, but because of all that's going on, we knew we couldn't, didn't have enough time, but it'll be on the next meeting agenda.
All righty, any other?
I want to update on the block watch grants and process.
Okay. Any other? I had an individual that called me that was a veteran, wanted to know what our veterans' hiring practices were, and that if we, if we look at veterans versus disability of veterans, veterans that have disability, and what are, and how do we actually, our hiring practices when it comes to that? So if we can actually look at or have an update on our recruitment of veterans?
Yes, sir.
And in management positions also, if we can get a number of how many veterans we have in upper management positions also. They would like to have that information.
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, meetings.